Okay, it is slightly after seven o'clock if we can come to order. And Clerk, would you please call the roll?
City Council members, amends. Brown?
Here.
Hazen?
Here.
Jacobson?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Roberts?
Here.
Who?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Okay, approval of the minutes of the previous meeting, which is June 11th, 2018. Do I have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved by Jared, seconded by Aaron. Any corrections to those minutes? Negative, no corrections. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Thank you, Jared. Okay, under additions to the agenda regarding ordinance number 2018-06-047, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 23, Operation and Parking Abdochless Bicycles on City of Urbana Right-Away and Property, Community Development. This ordinance, I'm told, is not ready to go. Do we have any motions to postpone it till the next committee meeting?
I'll move that we hold the ordinance until...
Drop it.
We just drop it off the agenda?
Yeah.
Alright, I'm gonna move that we drop item number eight from the agenda for this evening's meeting.
I'll second.
Okay, moved by Jared to drop it off this agenda and seconded by Mary Alice. Any discussion on that motion? We're gonna vote on that? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? The ayes have it. Missed something? Okay, public input, I have one input card from Bishop King James and Reverend Dr. Evelyn Underwood. They choose not to address us at this time but want us to know that they are continuously concerned about the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer problems. Do we have any presentations this evening? Guess that's a no. Okay, staff reports, anybody?
I just thought I might share with the public, since I know the council members know, but the public may not know, that Mayor Marlin is in Washington DC with a group from the Chamber of Commerce. It's the annual DC fly-in and they're in DC to advocate for certain projects that are beneficial to the quality of life in Champaign County and those are of interest to us as well and they include Willard Airport, the sustainable long-term management for the Mohammed Aquifer, the I-57, I-74 interchange reconstruction, and high-speed rail between St. Louis and Chicago, among other things. So I just thought I would share that with, for the public's information.
And just a few updates, or rather announcements, from community development. First, if you're not aware, Fred Cobb, the Chair of the Community Development Commission, is leaving that commission after 42 years and 35 of those years at the helm. So there's a reception being held tomorrow evening prior to their regular meeting. At 6:00 PM is the reception, the meeting's at 7:00. So if you have a few moments, stop by. Secondly, another three events coming up for What's in Your Square. There's hour-long visioning that we are conducting for the public at large. We have held this activity for several of the boards and commissions, but the public sessions, we had one last week and the following ones are Wednesday, June 27th at 6:00 PM, Sunday, June 30th at 11:00 AM, and at 1:00 PM, hoping to get some of the vendors and the visitors at the market. And all three of those will be held in Lincoln Square Mall. We'll put some signs up so people can find us more easily. And finally, two sad notes, we have two people leaving our department, Christopher Marks in Planning and Matt Regic, whom you'll see later tonight in Grants Management will be leaving. Chris is leaving this week on Wednesday and Matt staying with us until next week, so be sure to bid your farewell.
Okay, that it? Well, next up is gonna be, yeah, you're right, I missed that, consolidated social service funding for fiscal year 2019, community development.
Did wanna follow up on a couple of items. Some of the questions that were presented at the last meeting, we did check with Champaign County Christian Health Center and with the question regarding the capacity where they were not, they were not serving as many people as they showed their capacity was. Jeff Trask, the Executive Director there, confirmed that it was a staffing issue that was, they're trying to recruit more doctors to be able to serve more clients that they have the capacity to serve, but the staffing is what is holding them back. Other than that, I did check into Champaign County Healthcare Consumers, try to see about satellite offices, and they do currently offer services and provide services at the county jail. So it could be something that we could then talk to them about providing that at other areas in Urbana as well, to try to provide outreach in that capacity as well. Other than that, I'm happy to entertain any other questions.
We have any questions? Bill Brown?
Yeah, I mean, I know they do this, they sign up people in the county jail and they're getting reimbursed for that through, you know, Health Board or through a couple of different agencies. But we were interested in specifically in maybe having office hours like in the library or someplace else in Urbana.
And that is something that we could approach them for and sort of taking the same approach as with CU Men Shelter, we could offer a sort of fee-for-service type hybrid model with that, where we tie a requirement for holding office hours in Urbana to our award. It's a possibility, it's something to consider.
Okay, I guess I would suggest we reduce the award by $8,000 and say that $8,000 would be contingent on opening a satellite for a minimum of three hours a week.
Mary Alice?
I think that's a really good idea and actually it kind of speaks a little bit to some of the things that I was looking at. I agree that I think we should reduce it by $8,000 and have a contingency that we would like to offer more funding if they can meet certain conditions. I know that I had asked specifically about one of the organizations that had been slated to receive more funds than they had requested, primarily to continue to hold, I think it was November and March, I believe, were the hours for the homeless shelter, that we wanted to give them funds to stay open those two additional months. So I would like to propose the same strategy, basically saying that we would give them less, and I have to calculate the amount of money, but contingent upon their agreement to do that. I think that that's pretty reasonable. I did have...
Can I just clarify, the request was for them to open October 1st. They were slated to open December 1st. And so essentially what we had spoken to them about, and there was a kind of tentative verbal agreement that we could put in the contract, was that they open October 1st. And then it basically would close, I believe it's the 1st of April, although it's my understanding that there are some things afoot that might mean that they can stay open longer in the spring. So my recommendation to the council and the board is actually to incentivize them to open earlier, because there's a better chance that there may be some additional support for them to stay open later in the spring.
So is the idea then that we would ask them to be open from October, the additional funds will be used to be open from October 1st to December 1st?
Correct.
Okay, and that's fine with me. I just wanna, I'd like to tie something specifically to that request if we're going to increase the funding for that. And then the second question that I had is a little bit of a, I've been trying to dig through some of, so one of the things that I did is I went through and I saw, well, how much are we increasing people by what they normally get? Not to say what they normally get is the right amount, but just curious. And I kind of ordered those people. So here's my question, we consistently give groups dollar figures. They ask us for a certain amount of money, it's very rare that we give them 100%, right? Usually we give them some percentage of their allocation. And I think for the past couple of years, for the most part, council has tried to stay within a range. We don't try and slash people too far, we don't try and give people big jumps unless there's a need there. So what happens? They say that they need the funds, they need, we'll just play, $10,000 to provide X service. We give them $5,000. Do they still provide the service? I mean, you've got, we're giving them $5,000 less than what they requested. Does that mean that they're no longer doing X, Y, and Z? Or does that mean that they are still continuing to provide what they said they were gonna provide in the application?
So essentially, my reading of most of the applications is this is not a fee-for-service. They essentially have a program and then they're receiving funding from different pots to fund that program. And the piece that they report to us is how many Urbana residents have been served. Because we don't do fee-for-service, it's not like you get less money, therefore you're going to serve less Urbana residents. It's more like this is a program that serves Urbana residents and if you receive less money, then, and there's a question in the application, what would you do were you to receive less funding for this year? And usually it's, you know, we may be limited in terms of what we can provide our services. So essentially, and there are some times where, and we've seen this with some groups that got funded at such a low rate that they didn't come back to reapply. And so essentially they're saying, you know, the money I'm getting from, you know, Urbana and the township is not significant enough to offset either the administrative costs or the program is not viable. So I think, like many programs that are grant-funded, it's like there's the program and then there's these different pots that come in. I think what the council and board needs to look at long-term is ensuring, the intention of the funding is that it adds value to Urbana residents. And it's not really set up that way. And so as I've mentioned before, I'm in conversation with the Mental Health Board, which has taken more of a fee-for-service approach. And I think that if we really wanna make sure that the dollars go to Urbana residents, it should be you have a program, there's a program fee, for example Meals on Wheels, and everyone from Urbana who is served by Meals on Wheels would actually get a discount because we're paying money that the City of Champaign is not paying, the county is not paying, and yet the whole area is being served. So that is one way that we could think about it. I think that, I have managed nonprofits for many years and big changes year to year are very destabilizing for nonprofits. So I think that when, we should think strategically over, say, a two-to-three-year horizon if we wanna make adjustments in what people are making or say we really don't think this fits the portfolio. So, kind of like we did with the Park District this year, we're gonna say essentially they need to grow this into a genuine program that gets different funding from different sources and is kind of discreet, or essentially we're not gonna fund you, so this would be your last year receiving funding. And that helps them kind of plan for the future. I think for the same thing, if we go to a fee-for-service model, it would be good to make that decision soon. And then to let folks know so that they can do their planning and their organizations over whatever timeframe we provide.
Okay, alright. And I was also wondering if you had an opportunity to touch base with the Champaign Christian Healthcare Center over some of the things that we discussed last time.
Aside from the, we weren't able to get in touch with them aside from the capacity question, trying to think, was just about the religious nature of their services and activities, is that really outstanding?
So basically, there's a question on the application that says, how will this funding help build capacity in your organization and promote a long-term benefit in the organization? How can you leverage these to use other grant funds? How will these funds grow your service to Urbana residents? And so part of their answer to that question was it would help them move people to spend their time on fundraising activities, which was of concern to me.
Yeah, I, our understanding was that they were going to use that, use the funding for mental health services directly, so it really seems like something of a contradiction there.
If you could certainly follow up with them. So I guess the question is, yeah, I mean, having people, so there's two things that they're asking for, right? They're asking for money to buy dental instruments.
Yeah.
And they're asking for money to have volunteers go out and recruit new people to provide mental healthcare services.
I think their staffing is paid staff, so in the description, under program information, essentially both in my conversation with them and what's listed here, they say, we're looking for funding to bolster our capacity for mental health and dental care. So they want to increase their capacity. To accomplish this, we need more support for staffing, that would be paid staffing, to recruit more mental health and dental care professionals to volunteer at the clinic. So essentially, they need, they need to increase their staff time to reach out to mental health professionals, to bring in those professionals, provide that service. And what we had basically talked about is, we, one of the crises that we are facing in the community that we have not figured out how to fix yet is an extreme lack of mental healthcare. And so Champaign County Christian Health Center essentially leverages small staff dollars and volunteers in the mental health professional field to provide free, either through telehealth or in-person services, both psychiatric services, which are in very high demand, as well as therapy services. And so I think they said in here that they, you know, they plan to, they want to move, they have one healthcare practitioner, I know her, she's great, she does telehealth and she does psychiatric medication, they wanna increase that to five. So essentially the goal, the thing that we would measure them on is, did you get from one to five mental health professionals? Are you seeing five times as many patients in mental health? And I think that, what I would argue is that essentially, they, you know, they have 324 mental health visits, 88 individuals, but they really aren't able to treat anywhere close to the demand. So my recommendation to the council and the board is essentially to, our recommendation has been to fund them, and we can certainly hold them to that capacity growth in terms of mental healthcare. I think a five-fold increase would make a huge difference for our community, as someone who is constantly referring people to dead-end streets in this town when it comes to mental health. That said, I, as I said to you, Mary Alice, I also share some concerns about it being a Christian-based organization that's funded by the public, and I think, you know, one of the ways to think about this is stop gaffe funding, and then we kind of hold them to, you know, to this capacity growth. And we also can look at, are there other service providers? And I had mentioned to you when we spoke, Cunningham Children's Home, it's increased their therapy services to folks who are not just children in the home or wards of the state. And so I'd really like to, but they didn't apply in this case. So I'd like to cultivate that relationship and see if there are other providers that we could cultivate over this next year and kind of bring them into the competition pool. And I'm also open to your suggestions. This was just a group where a small input could make a big difference for our participants.
I really like the idea of going after the Children's County, Cunningham, sorry, home. I think that's a good idea. I would be willing to give this a try. I think that, I would like to suggest that we decrease it slightly. If they're talking about going from one to five, I'd be willing to go from one to three and just do this as a trial to see if this is gonna work, if this is a good way for us to leverage our funds. I'm trying to figure out, I have too many pieces of paper up here. How much should you recommend that we?
Seventy-five hundred.
I thought it was eighty-five, seventy-five hundred?
Eighty-eight, so eighty-eight, seventy-five was our initial recommendation. And if you recall, we tried to pull out $10,000 for women's shelter, women and children, and so we kind of ended up decreasing. So the recommendation before you is seventy-five hundred.
Alright, and do you know how many, how much the dental equipment was gonna cost?
Yeah, I can pull, hold on one second. They have it in their program information.
Equipment is what, $4,000, is that right? New equipment for both dental care and mental health?
Yeah, so it's $4,000 for the dental care and mental health. That's just equipment, though. And it looks like they were asking, they were asking for $10,000 in a increase in salary, $250 postage, $250 publications, 500 transportation. This is recruitment, we'll take driving to Professional Association Gathering and other venues to recruit. The $250 was brochures and other printed materials for recruiting, and then $250 for mailings to potential and current volunteers, and then the $4,000 for new equipment. So essentially, $10,000 for staff and then the, what is it, $5,000 for equipment, postage, publications, and transportation, was their request.
So I guess I would be willing to support $5,000 for this, for this organization for this year to see how this goes. I do have one other question, but I wanted to let other people have an opportunity to talk, so I'll just step by.
Anybody else? Dennis?
We had just been talking about one organization that was Christian-based and we were concerned somewhat about kinds of services that provide and whether there'd be a separation that's appropriate. But it's not the Cunningham County Children's Home also a Christian-based organization? Or is it?
I don't believe Cunningham Children's Home is Christian-based. I...
They do get, I think they get funding from the Methodist, though.
Okay.
I think they do have, I do think they do get some funding from the Methodist.
But they themselves do not identify themselves as a Christian service organization. Because I know they've got a chapel and they have programs, but I don't, I've never attended them.
We've never partnered with them since I've been here with any of our grant fundings.
Yeah, same with us. They have never applied for anything, so I don't know much.
They have a great reputation, I mean, they're very conscientious and attentive to what they do, and if we do pursue that, well, it would be interesting to invite them to help, I guess.
Yeah, so we could explore that with them. It's not, a religious affiliation is not listed in their mission statement, it is part of their history going back to 1895, when the United Methodist Women helped to start that. And actually, I think most of the social services in town, where oftentimes their origins are religious-based, so I would want to look at other organizations before necessarily, you know, targeting them.
Yeah, have you referred people to the Christian Health Center before?
Yes, particularly immigrants, folks, because with Medicaid, I like to refer people to places where, that take Medicaid, so I don't put the burden on places that don't take Medicaid or that take everyone. So the free clinics typically folks who are not yet signed up for health insurance, and particularly immigrant folks in our community, we do refer.
Okay, and I know they have pretty limited hours right now, so is it thinking that if they had more volunteers, they would expand those hours? I think it's like two hours a week for mental health now, two or three hours a week?
Yeah, in terms of mental health, they would certainly expand their hours. I think they have several nights a week and they do take walk-ins, which is a really nice aspect. And so we have sent people over, the other thing about them is that they do after-hours. And so we have a after-hours hotline run by a Martell Miller advocate, and essentially if someone is in dire need, but it's not an emergency situation, the free clinics are really helpful for that as well.
Okay, thanks, yeah. I mean, I think that expanding the capacity there would be good. I don't, are there other, I know that's a big need to have access to psychiatrists without Medicaid. Are there any other organizations doing that?
There are a few places in town that have psychiatric services for the poor. It's Rosecrans is the primary location. It's, it, there's a waitlist, it's difficult to get in a Cunningham Children's Home, which I just confirmed recently because of this conversation, they also have a waitlist. Family Services does not take Medicaid, which is one of the reasons we actually reduced their funding and counseling, because almost everyone we're working with has Medicaid, and we increased it in other areas. So they stayed stable in terms of their funding, but we pulled back from the counseling services. But they are in the process of applying and we hope to restore that funding once they can take Medicaid patients, patients who are paying Medicaid. And then Francis Nelson Health Center, which honestly refers to the same people, the same psychiatrists as Rosecrans. We need more psychiatrists to take Medicaid in this town. It is a very urgently felt need, and it's a big pinch point. I mean, honestly, I don't understand why it's not required and that people get to pick and choose, but that is for another conversation.
Does Cunningham take adults, or is it just children?
Yes, it takes, that's the new, it's a fairly new program, and I met with one of the program directors and we were discussing, they do take adults, they don't have to be associated with the other Cunningham programs, so that's very helpful. It's just that as soon as they opened their doors, they had a very long waitlist. And so we got a few people in early who got access and then basically were in holding patterns. So for example, I mandate when somebody has a mental health issue that it's diagnosed and untreated, I actually tie their assistance to receiving a mental health evaluation, and there are people who I referred months ago who still haven't gotten an evaluation. So I can't, I can't take the assistance from them, they're in the queue, but they're not actually getting evaluated or getting the support or services they need. And in particular, I will just mention, there is one person who is a visibly homeless person in Urbana who has housing, but because we can't get in and get this person mental health services, we can't get her stable so that she can actually access the housing that we have made available for her. So I mean, that's just one example of many, of like the pinch points that people, we have, we don't have psychiatric services. And this honestly is not gonna solve it, even if we went to five, that would be huge. I think it would be huge to have five, but, you know, even three, I feel like we're, you know, for a few nights a week, we're still gonna need to solve this problem.
Do any of these other agencies that you mentioned take advantage of volunteer professional help, or are they all paid staff?
All paid staff except for Christian Health Center, which is why I felt a small input with big impact.
Okay, great, thanks. Thanks for all the information.
Yeah, sure.
It's really valuable.
More, Mary Alice?
Do. So the other thing I was trying to figure out was some of these budgets. And so we're proposing to give first followers 185% of what we did last year, so I was looking at their budget, and I'm hoping you can walk me through a little bit here. So on the program budget, it seems to me, it appears to me that the budgetary information program budget that people have been providing is just for what they are suggesting they provide to Urbana citizens.
This, maybe you can speak to this issue, because some folks filled up their budget inaccurately. Let's see, so, real quick, our budget. So the budget, the intention of the budget, if you look, it's on page...
The budgetary information, Part C?
Yeah, Part C.
Yep, got it.
So essentially, so first followers is proposing a little bit of a different program that fits under youth employment. So the folks that they're working with will have stipends in employment, which was missing from our portfolio, and it's actually a place where we need to cultivate other people to apply for these, because we want to see additional kind of youth employment and direct participant salaries. Oftentimes the salaries will go to case managers and whatnot, and we wanna see more benefit directly to the very poor. So that's one of the reasons that we're seeing an increase in funding. Also, that program is building its capacity, so I imagine an on-ramp for the program where program income would grow, not only from us but from other places, and you'll see this as they've added Mental Health Board and other places that are funding them. But essentially, they're asking for $9,000 for salaries, $8,000 for a portion of the program director that is, or for the program director just for this program, $2,000 for program staff, $600 for publications, and $1,000 for transportation. That includes participant travel expenses. So they've asked for $20,600 and our recommendation is $15,600.
So the confusing part to me, as I looked through their budget, was, I mean, I understood that, but then when I went and I looked at their funding sources for the previous years, which is on Section E, the amount that they received, so the amount that they received last year was $85,000. Okay, and then if you look at, of course, they're not just serving Urbana people, they're serving us for the whole program. But then if you go all the way back to the back, it says, agency budget, that they only spent $58,000.
This is their...
That's why I'm just confused by this application. So I guess what I'm saying is, before, I would be comfortable increasing it, I would like to just get some of the discrepancies, or at least understand the rationale behind some of the budgets, because they don't align with at least my understanding of how it's done.
So just so we understand this piece, because it might make sense, the town board is supposed to confirm the final budget on July 9th, and so that might be a good time for you to confirm the final allocations as well. So there is some time if you wanted some additional information. I think you passed the city budget last week, correct?
Correct.
So your big bucket for social service allocation was probably included in that, but it may have not been broken down specifically?
Correct.
That's my guess, okay.
Yes, yes.
So, and the question about first followers is... So, and the question about First Followers is, if your income from last year was 85.815, which was, I think that's referring to last year revenues, funding sources for each fiscal year. So you can look at, oh, no, you're correct, it's for this fiscal year. So the fiscal year was 85.815, and then your question is, why is their budget only for 58.432 if their-
Right, correct.
-income is? And I think that's a great question. I did not see that before, so.
Okay. And then last but not least, their draft budget for the upcoming year is $81,000, which is why I assume the $20,000 that they were requesting was specifically for X number of people. Because I would assume, the First Followers is not multiple programs, all right? It's just one program.
They have, they do have multiple programs. So the primary program that we use is actually their Help Desk, which they're not requesting money for. They have a staff member, or a volunteer person who is actually located at township once a week. That just started probably a month ago. And that person essentially assists anyone who comes to township who has prior criminal conviction accessing housing and employment. They also have a Help Desk Hour at Bethel AME. They have sometimes moved that to another location. I'm trying to remember what that location is. So they, that's one program, is the Help Desk Program, and essentially it's walk-in hours for anyone, you know, who's dealing with criminal convictions. We do significant referrals. I would say 60% of the people that we work with, we refer. Some of them are just dealing with homelessness, and they can't take that piece on yet, but we continue to work with them, and after we've gotten them to housing, we still try to get them over to First Followers. And their second program is this program, which I'm trying to remember the name, it's-
Reentry?
Go Mad?
The Go Mad Program, yep. So this is the Go Mad Program, and it's more of a, it's a youth apprentice training program where the youth, most of the money goes to youth stipends. And just for the record, this is a really different model than some of the other models like See You Fresh Start, which basically provides no money to the youth and expects them to change their lives, but, you know, funds case managers. And so this model is not a behavior modification model only. It's a model that's actually focused on getting youth stipends and building buy-in through that piece. And so they do the 20 hours per week training, and then they, they work in building construction. So they're, we're doing like pathways to work with the, with the First Followers. And the third program, which is not a, it's a program in conversation, I'm meeting with them tomorrow on this topic, is a reentry house. And so that is, that's been a program that they have been, has been in program design mode for about two years. And you may have noticed, they brought, they, with Education Justice Project, brought Susan Burton, who's kind of like the national model for reentry houses, to town multiple years. And so she is actually working with First Followers and Education Justice Project, and has provided free technical assistance in setting up a reentry house. I also am meeting with groups that may open a reentry house for women, so trying to deal with the homelessness picture by talking to the various people. But First Followers is looking at a house from, and in particular. So that's a nascent project that they have. I'm not sure if there's any other projects I'm unaware of-
Okay, that's good to know.
...but those are the three. Now, they're primarily a volunteer organization, so in terms of their budget, their budget is going to look small, because most of the effort is volunteer. For example, the person who's located at Cunningham Township is all volunteer. I've been trying to recruit him as an intern, so we'll see if we can bring him in for additional hours at township. But that is part of what you see, and so I think it's important to, what I, what I try to get organizations to do, and I think with First Followers, with like, with Big Brothers, Big Sisters, and other groups that have applied in the past, we really, and we talked about this, they need to quantify their volunteer time. A Christian Health Center would be a good example. So when we're looking at capacity, we really need to be able to look at, what is your capacity? For example, the IMC has 24 full-time equivalents of staff, but you wouldn't note that when you walk in the front door, because there's two paid staff members there, two and a half. So I think that, that one of the pieces that we talked about when we looked at the applications, and we're just trying to like, compare apples and apples, is getting folks to actually name their capacity both in a volunteer way and in a paid staff way. Because volunteers shouldn't be invisible. I mean, they're a really important part of leveraging dollars to make things happen, so.
Absolutely. All right, well, maybe I'll follow up a little bit with a little nitty-gritty detail, since you're already meeting with them, and I can ask you some of those.
And I did want to mention also about the budget, just looking at the numbers there, what jumped out to me was that they were budgeted for about $80,000 in 1718, and we got these applications in right around March or so, so it was maybe three-quarters of the way through fiscal year 1718, and it showed that they had spent about $50-some thousand. So I would be interested in seeing what those numbers are now-
What their actuals are.
-at the close of the fiscal year. My guess is, they probably spent most of the money that they've received, it's just that's where they were at that time. That's just what I'm seeing, and I think it's, we should still follow up with them and try to see, but that's, from my experience, I've seen that with agencies before, at their budgets.
Yeah, there were several agencies that did a point in time, we stopped right here, and this is-
Not what they're supposed to do.
Yeah, right, they're supposed to do the, like, the whole year before, but some of them was like, they just stopped and said, okay, this is three-quarters of the year, half the year, and this is what we've spent, and this is what we've served, so. So this all begs the question, I know that you guys have been working on this application, and I'd like to offer help with, you know, looking through some of these questions, so that we can streamline and make it a little clear.
Okay, yes, please.
Okay, thank you.
Bill Brown?
I just wanted to add a little bit about the First Followers. I went to their graduation, the Go Mad graduation ceremony. Go Mad stands for Go Make a Difference, not Be Mad. And I'd say that these, I think there were about a dozen people that graduated, and they are not all young people, they're a range of ages, late teens to late twenties, maybe even into the thirties, but they're definitely high-risk people that, I think this really does make a difference, to give them a chance to learn something. And the one young man, I forget his name, that came and talked to us, Alan?
I think it's Alan Baines.
Yeah, Alan came and talked to us, you may remember, at some point, about, probably last winter or early spring. But, yeah, and so some of them go on and get real jobs with people in the trades, or building trades, and, you know, it's their first real job, and I think it's a real effective program. It may not serve a lot of people, but I think it does serve the people that need it.
If we could open up the building trades to young people coming out of high school from this community, specifically Champaign-Urbana, many things would change in this community. And this program does not, you know, fix that problem. I think that's a bigger problem for Parkland and for WorkNet, and I have a, I'm having a conversation with WorkNet, because we're hoping to become a partner with them, but that is epic, because kids get out of high school in this community, they graduate from Urbana and Champaign High Schools, and they cannot get jobs, because college students who are overqualified get service jobs, and there's not, and there's hardly anything else. And the building trades have largely been closed, especially to people of color in this community. It's a very long and tragic history that needs to change. And there's a great report on this exact issue that I would be happy to share with you on racial justice in the building trades. It goes into detail about this issue. So I, you know, I encourage you to, you know, get informed, because if we want to really solve systemic problems, we have to go to the roots, and this is a big part of the roots of the problem.
So, you've just jogged my thinking on something. We do look at minority participation on the part of contractors, but we don't systematically look at minority participation on the part of the building trade unions that are, you know, the people that staff are contractors. So I guess I'm wondering, maybe I might ask council, are there other, and this might be a research question, are there other communities in the United States, other cities, that have extended the minority participation pressure that, that communities have through their contracting process, extended that to the building trades unions?
I am not, I haven't experienced that, I haven't seen any of that. That doesn't mean it doesn't exist, because I have not researched it. You are right, it would be a research project, and it's, the way you have framed it, it's not a legal issue, it's a practical issue. Have they, have communities put pressure on unions and, you know, for apprenticeships and all, in terms of minority and women?
Well, maybe I'll, maybe I'll broaden my gaze to the general population at that end of the aisle, because as a, as a, as a practical issue, you know, perhaps that's in the purview of the city administrator to think about, but I'm sure that it would also have legal implications.
It, the city generally, from my experience, doesn't get into, unless there's a HRO complaint, doesn't get into going out and urging unions, you know, in terms of taking on minorities. It doesn't come to us. Obviously, we negotiate with unions, and we have our policies in the city to try to increase minority hiring within the cities. We are working on ordinances in terms of contractors and, you know, people who we seek to retain to provide construction, whatever, services. But in terms of reaching out to unions themselves, other than through the ordinances or those kinds of programs, I'm not aware of an active reach-out. And I'm not aware, in terms of encouragement, that there would be any legal bar to prevent that. In terms of hiring or requiring, now you get into this issue of studies and all of that business. That doesn't mean the city has to do a study, but if others have in the general area, or like communities in central Illinois, obviously we can use and rely on their studies.
So I might just say two things by way of response. One is, I'm very interested in the report that Danielle referenced, and Vassilia Clark has talked to me about bringing a group of us together to talk about this issue. And so one is, root cause analysis is key, and we'll be collaborating on understanding that. And the second thing is, if, if what you describe is a tool that other communities have used, we need all the tools in our toolbox that we can to address this, and we'll investigate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's been rather a while ago now, during my first term on council, I attended several meetings which were held on Mattis Avenue. There was a building trades school there that I believe was set up by Parkland College. And at several of the meetings, representatives from the plumbers, bricklayers, and other labor unions came and talked to the service providers about the huge concern they have because so many of their senior members were retiring, and it was going to be leaving a large gap in future local, you know, union services. So it seemed at that time, I mean, I walked through many construction projects that the students had done already, and it seemed to me that there was a very open door at that time at Parkland to, to racial equality among the people that they were selecting. So it's kind of interesting to hear that there's a feeling that that's changed, but I would really want to encourage people to talk to the Parkland, or the unions themselves at the union halls.
There is actually a circle of unions that came together, Martell Miller from our office attended the meetings representing Cunningham Township, because we do help to assist people to move into work situations. And the ideal would be not to have them move into, you know, service industry jobs, but something that is more sustainable, because ultimately, we want them to not have to access assistance, and service industry jobs require that people continue to access assistance, most likely. And so, and so in those conversations, those were organizers and union folks coming together to have conversations. I can get an update on where that stands, but it seemed a little like there wasn't enough union participation in the room. I feel like we've been kind of, I feel like Erin can speak to this, I'm calling, not you, that this has been a conversation we go around and around with. What I would encourage you to do is look at the city first. You supply a lot of jobs, you contract and subcontract with a lot of places, you have a human rights ordinance that requires that your commission be out in the community educating around issues of discrimination. I think their education has been very limited, if you look at what kind of education, outreach, advertising, are there any signs anywhere that tell people what their rights are? Nowhere. We produced some at the township and put them up, and people were surprised to see what was written there. So, you know, just the basics of educating people about their rights, and then use the power of the purse here at the city, and make sure that, you know, municipalities and government agencies are like the second biggest employer in aggregate next to the University of Illinois in this community. So the park districts, the schools, the cities, I would just start with the public sector, which historically has been the place that has been the most open to people of color. It's been one of the first places, going back to the seventies, where people were able to access good jobs, who were coming out of Jim Crow laws in, in the United States. And I think that if you look at the demographic information amongst government entities in this county, it is abysmal. It is terrible. And if you want to look at, you can say, you know, all you have to do is go to a site that is building a building, either on campus or off campus, and I want you to count how many people of color there, because I've done that. And I've actually gone and talked to people who were the informant and said, do you understand you don't have a single person of color on this job site? And do you know what that looks like? And do you know that there's a rule in Urbana that says you can't discriminate based on, oh, well, we get our folks from the union? So I think that, you know, common sense is go to a job site and look and see, are there people of color who are working there? But I also think it's useful, do you have demographic information on the city of Urbana? On your contractors, on your subcontractors? When I was on City Council, we spoke up and down about this, and I don't think much has changed, which is subcontractors can't get access to dollars through the city because they're not bonded and insured. So what we talked about 10 years ago is can we help people bond and insure? Can we create bonding and insuring pools? Can we actually make it easy for people to access those who are small businesses? And can they, you know, who's taking out your trash? Who's doing this? Who's doing that? And you should look at the dollars that you're spending here. Start with that, that will educate you, and then you can look outside of that and look at the unions, and, you know, through your Human Relations Commission, really educate Urbana businesses. Because I will tell you, and we do have a discrimination report coming to you in discrimination and housing, it is sick, and it's coming to you August or September, and it will show you that there's flagrant violations of the law in this town, and you, you should start there.
So, first of all, I would like to say it's really encouraging to hear such in-depth clarity about the work that you're doing in the office as a township supervisor, the understanding that you have of the different programs that are applying. I think that the committee that you guys have put together is doing a great job. And of course, First Followers is a program that is very special, I think, in the community. I was a part of another program that also had stipends for the participants, and it is something that's, it was different even 10 years ago, when I was a part of that particular program. It was something I had never seen before. And we do see, over and over again, social service programs end up creating jobs for case managers and directors, and then the individuals, they don't quite get the service that we thought would come from it. So it is very refreshing to see that those dollars that are going to be spent are also being put in the hands of the most vulnerable and the most needy, giving them a real opportunity to actually make a difference in their own lives, as well as get some of those services. So First Followers, I know, is generating a lot of buzz, a lot of excitement around the hands-on experience that comes from James, and Marlin, and Tamika, and Tammy, and- the hands-on experience that comes from James, and Marlin, and Tamika, and Tammy, and all the people who are involved in the program, because they're not just bringing a level of scholarly theory, because they have academic skill sets as well, but they've lived this particular experience, and so they're very passionate about it. I'm very passionate about it. So it's extremely important that we continue to give them the services or the level of funding that they need to be successful. I appreciate your thoroughness, Mary Alice, because it's fair, it's across the board. There are legitimate questions that need to be asked, I think they should be answered. I don't have a problem with that. I'm always mindful of a culture that gets created through conversation. And so I want to be, I appreciate Bill's response and other responses about this particular program and about the people who are running it, that it is a program that this community really truly needs, and the skill sets that are being provided are usable, are useful for the participants, whether they go to the union or not, because these are skill sets that they can use just in their general lives. So I just wanted to say that a little bit about the First Followers program itself and what's happening there, and the work that they're doing. I was just talking to the young man, Alan Baines, about two weeks ago, he called me and said that he had gone through the expungement program that we do every year, and he received a letter that he was very excited about, and then he posted it, I think, on the social, social media. So there are a lot of really good success stories that are coming out of this program. And no program is perfect, right, you know, because people run it, right? So now, the other thing for me is the, the trade stuff. And Eric, I'm really, again, encouraged by, Carol's comments, all the comments I've heard today is like, look, you know, something's going to get done about this, right? And it's when people that are in positions of authority or positions of influence, when you have a certain passion and determination about something, I think that's when you see change happens. And I must say, I'm also encouraged that the Matt Kellys of the world and other people like that who've taken over the plumbers and pipe fitters as the president. I think we see people in positions where they want to really bring about some level of change, and programs like First Followers and what's happening at Parkland is helping to prepare a demographic and a group of young people, people of color who would be ready to go into those positions. Now, the other thing that's important to understand as we educate ourselves about this, is that many of these conversations about people of color being involved in construction sort of goes to the workforce level, subcontract level, maybe general contract level, but that's even iffy. But no one talks about financing, no one talks about architects and engineering, the engineers who are necessary. I did speak to Bill almost a year ago about May Jewels, who was an African-American woman. She's actually out of Chicago, but she is an engineer. She does more of the street and pavement, roadwork type of stuff. But the conversation can't broaden until we deepen our understanding of how this process works, right? So architects, designs, developers, then you get into finance. Can you finance the project? Will the banks give you a loan to do the project? Can you sustain your business if you don't get paid for three months or six months? Many of the social services understand that when we didn't have a budget for however many days or how many years. Can you stay afloat? These are broader, deeper conversations that we all need to understand about if we're going to actually get the level of access for, for people of color in contracting and the unions, because there is a lot of finger pointing, right? Will the developer choose this? No, the subcontractor does. No, it's the unions, they don't provide me enough people, right? So unless we understand how it all flows, then it's going to be difficult for us to really say, okay, here's the point of leverage. Now, Eric, I think your question is a very good question, and I'm not going to answer it right now. Me and you can talk later. But I think it's a very important piece for us to discuss.
So, if I may.
Yes.
This is a, this is actually a little bit personal with me because we have an adopted son who is, by birth, African-American, and very early in his work life, he got into apprentice program in the carpenters' union. And that has made such an enormous difference in the entire arc of his life. And I'm not sure, you know, at the time that he got in, Naomi was an elected official. I'm not sure that if he had come from a different family, he would have gotten into that apprentice program. So I'm really deeply aware of how much difference that can make. It's really important that at that point of entry, that, that the playing field is level.
Okay. Any more? Anybody else? Guess that's it. Are you done with your presentation?
Yeah, so it sounds like, yes.
Just making sure.
This is, this is a committee of the whole, correct? So basically, you can send it to council? I mean, the question is, are you going to keep it here? Are you sending it to council? I mentioned that June 9th, I don't know if that's a council or committee meeting.
I think there's both nights, both nights. There's, I mean, there's both, both that night.
Oh, there's both on that night. So it could be that you send this to council on that night for a final vote, and then you can also speak about it in town board or whatnot, but I think you just need to decide where you're going to bounce it.
Go ahead, Charlie.
Yeah, I was just going to remind everybody that you've rescheduled the July 2nd town board and city council meetings to July 9th. Added into there is a public hearing for the township budget. And another meeting you don't know about yet, but do now, there'll be a 5:30 meeting for a closed session on labor negotiations. So Monday, July 9th is going to be very busy. And yes, you do need to send this to council, sort of to match that it's, it's already in the town board budget, so it's already at the town board level, but you need to get it to council so that it, to get in sync.
Okay, so, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mary Alice.
I was going to make a motion for you.
I was just going to say, do we need a motion? Go ahead.
Do we need a motion?
Yes.
Okay. I will move, sorry, I don't have the name of it. Here we go. I will move that we move recommendation for approval to consolidated social service funding for fiscal year 2019 with three caveats. One is to reduce the amount for the Champaign healthcare consumers by 8,000 contingent upon them, opening up an Urbana location. Two, reducing the homeless shelter, I'm going to have to come up with a number here, contingent on them, opening up the homeless shelter from October 1st to December 1st. And three, to reduce the Champaign Christian healthcare by 2,500 from 7,500. So those, that's my motion.
Do we have a second for that?
Yes, I'll make a second.
Okay. Motion by Mary Alice, second by Dennis. All in favor, say aye.
Could just point out clarification, since there's a couple of missing pieces in your motion. Mary Alice, could you make the, you had mentioned opening an Urbana location for healthcare consumers, and someone, would you like the request that we bring to them, that they have some weekly presence, monthly presence, or you just want to leave it up to them?
I will leave it up to Bill because he's the one who's coming up with the hours and days.
It seems like two or three hours a week minimum.
Okay. Two to three hours a week. It would just be helpful to be clear with that.
Yes, absolutely.
With C M N's emergency shelter, could I make a friendly suggestion that it be the entire amount above what they requested? We're actually giving them more than they requested because we're asking them to open early. So their request, goodness.
That's what I was trying to find.
Their request is, it just was in front of me. Hold on.
They requested 12,000.
They requested 12,000. We are recommending.
30.
30,000. So the increment is 18,000? Is that correct? So it would be, C M N's emergency shelter would be reduced to 12,000.
Yes.
With the, with 18,000 additional dollars if they can open October 1st and remain open through the end of their season.
Correct.
Okay? And with Christian Health Center, you had suggested a reduction from 7,500 to 5,000?
Correct.
That means that you would be $2,500 under budget. May I recommend that you put the 2,500 in the women's shelter bucket? So you're essentially taking, the proposal is that you take 10,000 out and put it in that bucket, and you would increase that by 1250. So you wouldn't do an overall reduction, you would simply shuffle. Does that make sense?
Yes, that's fine for this, for this time. So there's four things that we're doing, is that correct? Just to summarize, so that we're all on the same page.
Exactly. So the fourth thing is to take the 2,500 that you took out of the recommendation for Christian Health Center, and you put it in the women's emergency shelter bucket that is part of this funding formula, but we don't have an application before this. And I say that partly because of working with the mayor to try to stitch together the amount that's needed from Urbana to make that work. And there's a lot of different, all the funding agencies are coming forward, so we just want to make sure Urbana can also hold that piece.
Okay, I do apologize because I missed the, you know, ask for discussion part, because it seemed to me like we had quite a discussion, but so I'll officially say, is there any discussion? And hope there isn't. So we had a motion by Mary Alice and a second by Dennis.
Right, and I accept the amendment.
Thank you.
Okay. We all ready to vote now? All in, right? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion stands.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we're down to mayoral appointments. We're down to mayoral appointments now, to boards and commissions. If it's all right with the committee, I'm going to read these all off, and we'll vote on all at once. There's three different people. This is at the market, at the square advisory board. Term ends June 30th, 2021. The first one is Diane Kane. Number two is Hyde, if I'm saying that correctly, O'Brien. And three, Sarah Semzane, or something to that effect, best I can do. Is there a motion to approve these three people?
Yeah, I'll make the motion to, to accept the mayoral appointments to the market at the square advisory board.
And send to council.
And send to council for approval.
For approval.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Dennis and seconded by Bill. Any discussion? Just kidding. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Now it's time to go into a closed session. If we have a motion for that to discuss minutes of closed sessions, review of closed session minutes pursuant to five ILCS 120/2, section C21. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Moved by Jared, seconded by Mary Alice. Yes, sir.
I'm going to call the roll.
Okay. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ammons?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Hazen?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
And Wu?
Yes.
We will move upstairs.
Okay. We'll come back after the session. Is everybody here?
I'll move that we go back into open session.
Second.
Okay, moved by Jared, seconded by Dennis, I believe, or?
I give to Eric.
Or Eric. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Negative.
Do we need a roll call for that? No, we're good.
Now that we are in open session, I hereby adjourn this meeting. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.